Good evening. I'd like to call, to order the City of College Place City Council meeting for November 12th, 2019. Will we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Councilmember Mayhagen would like to say a few words.
I want, even though it was yesterday, I want to thank any veterans that are here. Do we have any veterans in the -- thank you. Thank you so much for your service. Would you bow your heads for prayer? Dear heavenly Father, we thank you so much that we can come and do the business of the city. We thank you, Father, for our veterans, for our military that serves this country so well. We thank you so much for them. We thank you for our good city staff that work so hard, and we love them dearly. Lord, help us to do Thy will tonight, and give us the wisdom. We need to do the business of the city. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Next item is time for public comment, which is a time for citizens to address the council regarding items of concerns or interest of items that are not appearing on today's agenda. If you wish to speak on any such item, please state, step forward to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and you will have up to five minutes. Again, if there are anybody who would like to make a public comment, please step forward to the microphone. Okay, seeing none, and time for public comment is closed. Next item up for, on the agenda, is approving the consent agenda, which would include today's agenda, the City Council minutes from October 22nd, 2019, City Council minutes from November 7th, 2019, our banking resolution, legal responsible party, which is Mr. Rizzatello, the 2020-2022 police union contract, and the check register and financials for September 2019.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right, we have a first and a second motion to approve the consent agenda. Do we have any discussion or items or questions? Okay, hearing none, let's vote all in favor of approving the consent agenda. Any opposed? All right, the ayes have it, the motion is carried and adopted. I've been practicing. Okay, next item is we have, sorry, let me just catch up. We have an item that we'd like to remember a member of our city council from the past, Mr. Robert Stanfield. I believe we have some family members here, is that correct? Mr., all right, let's step forward. So I'd like to present a certificate of appreciation to you and your family for the service that your father did. I'd like for everybody to know that Mr. Stanfield served in the City of College Place in Council Region Position Number Four from November 20th, 1969 until January 9th, 1978. Mr. Stanfield was born May 22nd, 1931, and he went with the Lord on October 7th, 2019. Our condolences to your family and our prayers for comfort to you.
Thank you.
I appreciate your father's service.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
We have another great moment next. We have a story swearing in an officer, Andrew Shiles.
Mayor, Council, come over here. Andrew, Andrew's got his family here today and a lot of our officers. We much, we're very excited, this is a great opportunity, we have another commissioned officer in the City of College Place. Very excited. So, don't delay this at all, go ahead and raise your right hand. Is he going to repeat after me? Aye, state your name.
Aye, Andrew Shiel.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do you solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of the State of Washington.
Of the State of Washington.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Enforce the laws.
Enforce the laws.
As a peace officer.
As a peace officer.
To which position.
To which position.
I have been appointed.
I have been appointed.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you. I have your wires here. Congratulations and welcome. Extra points if you don't knock over my.
Andrew, can you just introduce your family portion, will you? What you all spot here.
So this is my wife standing up, Elise. Been married for 12 years now. That's my son Nolan, our youngest, who's got the phone in his hand, like usual. This is my daughter Audrey, and my other son Logan as well. My mother came here, Lori.
Welcome, and thank you all for sharing Andrew with us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is we're going to get an update from Rhonda Gould regarding the library status. Rhonda, if you'd please step forward to the microphone, thank you so much.
Good evening, Council, thank you Mayor for having me here tonight. I'd just like to give all of you a little update about the Walla Walla County Rural Library District and the close to progress that we're making in terms of having a facility here in town. We have been working with a few of the landlords here in town to provide an interim facility. I'm hoping we have something that I can report back to you on within, hopefully, a month, given that it's the holidays and things like that, maybe January. So stay tuned for that. We have a couple other things going on right now, and my, I just decided to do weird things. But first of all, I wanted to thank all of you who have actually gone to Plaza and gotten cards. We have had almost 200 residents from College Place sign up and get cards at Plaza since the annexation passed in August. So 200 cards in three months, my Plaza staff has been busy, and they're very happy about that. So I would also like to invite all of you to check out Plaza or check out any of our other branches around the county and just see what's available. We do have a very strong online presence where you can get digital items, ebooks, audiobooks, movies, et cetera, as well as training materials, things like that. So I wanted to invite everyone in College Place to a open house, which will be held December 3rd from 3:00 in the afternoon until 7:00 in the evening. It's a Tuesday, and I double-checked to make sure that you did not have a council meeting that evening, so I hope you don't.
We do.
You do? Oh, it's a workshop. Well, we'll change the date of our, of our open house then. But anyway, look for new information on the open house, and staff will be there to sign up College Place residents for cards and show you around our collection and what's available. The other thing I wanted to give you an update on is that the money that is coming from College Place will not actually be collected by the district until the end of April this next year. So I don't know if there's been any confusion in the community about that at all, but the tax collection will take effect beginning next year, not, we haven't seen anything yet from College Place. So that's just one little item of business to put out there. Also, right now, we don't know what the county commissioners will actually assess the residents of the county at. This past year, it was 47 cents per thousand dollars, and I did some quick math before I got here, and if your home is worth $250,000, your tax, your tax levy for the annexation will be $117.50 for library service for the year. So that's just, just an example. The year before, we were at 48 cents per thousand, so I'm guessing this year it'll probably stay at 47 cents, but who knows? I can't be sure. It just depends on the way the winds blow at the commissioner's office. The other thing I wanted to bring up too is that our Plaza lease does expire at the end of next year, so we need to be out of there. We do need to have a different facility. So what we're looking to do here in College Place as an interim facility is to have something, I think, larger than what we initially intended to have, because we will not only need to have a facility here, we'll have some overlap with providing services at Plaza and here in College Place next year. So we'll be able to have two locations that are very close by. Another thing I wanted to bring up is that we are in the process of starting strategic planning. I've spoken with a consultant from the State Library, and she is working with us to begin our initial planning stages for strategic planning. So I am hopeful, beginning in January, February-ish, we will have some community listening sessions here in College Place and as well as at the Plaza branch, and we'll have community listening sessions at all of our branches. But we particularly want to hear from the residents of College Place in terms of what you would like to see in our permanent facility here. For those of you who don't know, we do have land here, it's right next to the high school, and our long-term plan is to build there. So it just depends now on how interim our interim facility is, let's put it that way. So I'm hoping it's not long-term interim. So if anybody has any questions for me.
Do we have any questions for Ms. Gould?
No?
I do. Is there a cost for a library card?
No. No cost, no cost anymore for a library card for College Place residents. It's just in your property taxes.
Yes, it used to be a cost, isn't it?
Right, yeah, yeah.
I also do have a question. If people wanted to get a library card, can they do it online, or do they have to go in person to the Plaza location?
You can apply online, but to actually use services, you need to go in and get the card.
Get the card?
Yeah.
Well, I don't really have a question, I just have a comment that I've been to the Plaza Library a bunch, and I use your ebooks a bunch, and your staff there are really, really good.
Oh, thank you.
And the other thing is, you do have to have something that proves your address when you go in, so.
Yeah, yeah, so your driver's license or your water bill from the city, anything like that'll work.
Great. Any others?
Just a comment, thank you for being such a great partner and working on all this hard, and into an education and maybe through the update, give us all this information.
Thank you. Yeah, and I plan on coming back anytime council would like me to come and provide an update on what we've been up to. I know it's been a while since, since the election, so it's time. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Okay, moving on, we have no public hearings for today, so we're going to move on to action items. First item on the agenda for action items is adopt stormwater management plan. Mr. Gordon, Mr. Inslee, and Ms. Taylor.
I got the short straw. We're at the last step of this stormwater program. Motion before you today is to adopt the stormwater management program. Before we get to that, I will actually not be presenting tonight. We have Angela Taylor from Parametrics, who created the program and worked with the city on this, so without further ado, Angela.
So good evening. I've presented many times here, but I haven't met you, Mayor Hernandez, so. So I just wanted to briefly go through what I've already gone through, just bullet items of what the stormwater management plan is, what our contract with the city was all about. So I'm Angela Taylor again, Parametrics Engineering, and based out of Pullman. We have offices all over the west, so quite a big presence in stormwater, especially on the west side. So without further ado, part of our contract included GIS mapping, so this is just a list of some of the mapping that we've been working with the city. One of the biggest components here was to actually map the infrastructure. So we sent surveyors out on three separate weeks, almost three full weeks, to get all of the structures, the catch basins, manholes, to look at pipe sizing and pipe material, if we could find out what it was, and also map the outfalls. So that has been compiled into GIS mapping along with some of these other items. The topography was given to us by Walla Walla County. Soil's mapping is through the NRCS Soil Mapper, so a lot of that has already been compiled. We just put it into the same location. We updated the urban growth area per the new city annexations and all the city limits, so we have all that. And then I went in and looked at the sub-basins, so we broke it out for different drainage basins. So as you're aware, we've got Thompson Creek, Garrison Creek, Stone Creek, we've got the Berlin Game Pipe that is also fed by Military Springs, and then Cold Creek toward the north, and some other subsidiary ones that aren't necessarily in your city limits, but they do contribute, so Yellow Hawk and Mill Creek to the north. Another component of our contract was to complete the rate study. So we were fortunate to get FCS, who the city has worked with on many rates, so they completed the stormwater analysis with us and came up with a database for your billing, as well as some of the mapping for impervious area. And then we did a strategic sampling of lots in the city to see what your impervious surfacing was with the outage, and that's how we came up with our equivalent service unit. So any commercial or multifamily will be a multiplier of that ESU. So this is what the 2009 DOE MPDES Phase II municipal permit requires. Part of that was the stormwater management plan, which we are in the last stages of. But in that stormwater management plan, we look at public involvement, public information, public education, and we also look at illicit discharge detection and elimination. I've developed a draft IDEE manual for the city to use as they try to detect if there are illicit discharges, and those would be cross-contamination with sanitary sewer pipes, or spills, or leaking septic systems. So that's what IDEE stands for. Construction site stormwater. So the city will be more heavily involved, they already have been with plan review, to make sure that any site that is over one acre has an ecology construction stormwater general permit, but they will also be reviewing that and putting that in their, their review of the site plans. Post-construction stormwater management, so this is where your drainage reports come into play, you know, to make sure that your engineers and your developers are following the stormwater management manual for Eastern Washington and the City of College Place design standards, to make sure that we have both conveyance, treatment, and detention or retention or infiltration of that stormwater, so that we're not running off at a greater rate than the pre-developed condition. So that's where your post-construction stormwater comes into play, as well as maintenance of those facilities. I met with the O&amp;M guys today, we did a quick training with lunch, and we talked about the new municipal and operations maintenance plan. Just a brief plan of what we're going to do, how they're going to maintain the system, they're eyes and ears for the city, so they're going to keep their eyes open and look for potential contamination, potential problems, as they're moving about their operations. So they'll be cleaning out their storm, the storm system, looking for deficiencies in the system. And then when they're maintaining the parks or the buildings, they're going to make sure that they have secondary containment and some of those other key items. As part of your permit, you were the lovely winners of monitoring in Garrison Creek, because ecology and EPA did a TMDL study, and Garrison Creek has been found to have high fecal form. So we've come up with a plan, it can be a work in progress, it can change from year to sample into specific locations. We've identified additional ones, just to get some background readings, and then you have to do a wet weather test and a dry weather. So those are all stipulated in your new permit, which went into effect in August. So that's your monitoring and TMDL compliance. Some of the additional tasks that we did for the city was to develop the municipal and operations maintenance plan, so that's where I met with the city staff today. We also did that draft IDEE manual, so what to look for for your illicit discharges. And then I looked at the regional, the potential regional facilities for stormwater infrastructure and treatment. So I tried to identify where we could take, with the help of Robert Ensley and Robert Gordon, where we could take our stormwater to treat it and possibly detain it, to clean up the streams, to increase your water quality. So I put together a tech memo with some preliminary sizing, some preliminary costing. I will be revising that based on our meetings today, so I'm going to look at some, some minor revisions that should accommodate you as you move forward to possibly do that. And then in conjunction with that, Robert Ensley and Robert Gordon asked me to look at ASR, so aquifer storage and recovery. So that's where you would inject treated, highly treated groundwater, into the groundwater for later reuse as domestic water. So those could potentially be at the same location as your regional facilities. So I did a tech memo for that, and then I also have come up with some street sections. We're looking at bio-infiltration and biofiltration swales that developers and engineers can use to try to size the facilities for treatment, because ecology is now wanting City of College Place to start to come to terms with the treatment of stormwater. Hasn't been done in the past, and so we're just trying to get, get up there. Ecology is not making the city as a whole retrofit the entire city, so it's not like we're having to go in and put in treatment for every square foot of pollutant generating impervious surfacing, but moving forward, and then as you have funding available to try to retrofit some of those facilities. So as I mentioned, I met with the O&amp;M staff, they were very excited to spend their lunch hour with me. So we talked about what they would do. By December 31st, 2023, the city will have had to inspect and maintain all of their inlets, so catch basins, manholes, inspect, and if there is maintenance, go in and clean them and maintain them by 2023. And then every two years thereafter, they will have to have inspected and maintained each structure. So that's the biggest, I think, for the city moving forward, the O&amp;M staff. But then we also talked about, you know, as they move through their daily activities, their building maintenance, their park maintenance, just what to look out for, you know, herbicide, fertilizer, pesticide application. It'll save the money, it'll save the city money if they don't over-apply it anyway, but just the potential for that to get into the storm system. And then when they're doing their vehicle maintenance, just to make sure that they're not washing anything down into the storm system, that it should go to a sanitary sewer. So we discussed all of those items and more. This is just a brief look at the IDEE plan. So these are some of the items the city could do as they start to identify some of these potentials. You know, they could do dye testing, smoke testing, just visual inspection, they could do water sampling. So Robert Ensley and Robert Gordon will be coming up with a more formalized approach to that, but this is just the infancy, this is a guiding document, it's a draft document that you guys can edit as you move forward. And then as part of the rate study, we looked at some of the capital improvements, but I took a further dive into the capital improvement plan and identified, with the help of Mike Rizzatello and Robert Gordon, some of the additional areas where you have flooding concerns. A lot of those areas are where you have siphons, where there's just a catch basin connected with a pipe in between, and it doesn't really have a conveyance, it doesn't have a way to get out of that area. So some of the improvements would be to increase your conveyance capacity, maybe regrade your roads. So these are some of the capital improvement items that we looked at. Ecology was very keen on looking at water quality improvement. That is the overarching narrative for the MPDES permit. So you want to improve the water quality moving forward, and making sure that, that all developers, the city, everyone has that goal in mind. So again, here's just a brief overview of what I did for the regional stormwater facilities, just looked at the city as a whole. I looked at Thompson Creek and Garrison Creek combined downstream of that, we've got all of that area coming in, possibly put a regional facility east of the waste powder treatment plant, possibly another on Stone Creek. However, on Stone Creek, you do have a lot of newer development, and a lot of those developments have treatment and detention. And then of course the ASR. I did thorough research of the literature that's out there and the permit requirements, so I looked at the possibilities in conjunction with your regional facilities, what you would need to do. One of the biggest issues you'd have there is, well, two of the biggest issues, is a full hydrogeologic analysis. You'd have to hire a hydrogeologist to do a study of the aquifer and look at some of the components there, whether you'd have temperature degradation or chemical degradation by injecting that stormwater. You just have to make sure that you're obeying the groundwater rules. And then the second would be water treatment. You have to take that water to a cleanliness level, so you have to treat it prior to injecting So that's, that's what we did. And I am working on the final edits, but ecology has already given us their comments, I revised those comments, I have Robert Gordon and Robert Ensley's and Mike Rizzatello's last comments, and I'm incorporating those in the final document. So if you have any questions.
What questions do we have?
Two quick questions. I saw on one of those last slides there, as far as community education, what are our thoughts, where are our plans for educating the community? I guess as far as animal waste, cleaning of vehicles and things like that. What are your thoughts on that as far as getting the word out on how they can help us in controlling these contaminants?
Well, I know that Mike Rizzatello has been going on the radio station quite a bit and talking about stormwater. Also, on your website right now, there's a bunch of links, and then we also put together some flyers. So as you reach out to the public and everybody gets more educated on stormwater, they'll know that that, you know, go to a car wash or do it on your lawn, somewhere where it's not going to drain. So it's just about getting, getting the word out, and I think the city's already started that process.
Great. One other quick question. Of course, we are not responsible, I guess I would say, for some of the runoff, what would be east of our city, as it enters, how does that process work, where we monitor that? And is there a net, net effect on what we're responsible for in some of these trades?
You're only responsible for what you contribute, but that's why we're, we're proposing to do an upstream sampling, to get that background. It's, it'd be similar to when you're doing turbidity readings for construction sites to look at the sediment component. You get that upstream background level, and then you take a downstream just to see if it's impacted. If there's an increase, then you know that maybe it's occurring within your bounds, so.
Mr. Rizzatello, you had a clarification?
I just wanted to add, since the creation of the permit, we've also collaborated with College Place Lions Club, Rock did a great job coordinating that, so this past year we had two Garrison Creek cleanup activities over the weekend, and then going into next year, we're coordinating. And then going into next year, we're coordinating with them to do an earth day event also. So that's some of the outreach in addition to tar web, radio, and multifamily presidencies.
Well, thank you for having me. I know you have any other questions.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
I'll just add to what Andrew was saying. This document is required, you update it annually, so this is never a changing document. We'll be always revising it to make it more efficient and better, as problems are always evolving, so this will be too. So the motion is before you to adopt the storm water management program, so I'll leave it at that.
All right. So do we have a motion to adopt the storm water management plan as shared with us?
I'm going to adopt the storm water management plan with requested edits and forthcoming ecology comments to be addressed to the satisfaction of staff.
We have a first and a second. Are there any discussion items or questions? All right, so let's vote. Yes.
I have one more of a comment. When you talk about a living document, I've run into some issues lately where people evolve their living documents without anyone knowing about it. So I strongly recommend that you date all changes.
One of the requirements in the permit is that we actually get the public involved in the development of it too, so it'll be a public process. So everyone will be know about it, it'll be on our website that we're doing it. So it's not just going to be, you know, make changes, nobody knows, so yeah, I guess.
Good, thanks.
Any other questions? I'm up here again.
All right. Going to make it worth your time, Laura. Okay, so we have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none, the ayes have it, the motion is carried and adopted. Next item up is the Unified Development Code adoption, and Mr. Ricard's going to share that with us.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So this is hopefully the final stage in the updated development code process. So I'll start out just kind of hitting some of the highlights. So we've consolidated six chapters into one, so 15 through 19 are now consolidated into a new chapter, 14. What this will do for us is it's streamlined the permitting process, the categories of permitting that we have. For instance, we now have a type one, two, three, and four. So a type one is like you're building permits, things that are relatively administrative. Type two is a, is a, is still an administrative process, but there's, there's more detail that goes into it. You issue a decision before the permits issued that has conditions, but it still doesn't, it's still administrative, it doesn't go through a public process, there's not a notification. And then you get into a type three where you, for instance, like a subdivision, where you would have public engagement, public comment. And then that is approved by the hearing examiner. And then you have a type four would be the council actions, so updates to development standards, updates to the conference of plan, things of that nature, site-specific reasons. So it's very easy to, for me as the person that's applying these codes and working people, helping the public through the process, to go to a table, they can tell me what type of permit they want, or I can help guide them, and I can easily find out what category it falls into. So it's going to be very much streamlined for us. The environmental review section, so CIPA, the State Environmental Protection Act, we've made some changes there. We've increased the exemption levels. So for instance, under our current code, you're allowed only to do up to four lots without having to go through an environmental review. The state allows you to go up to nine lots, or, or build nine homes without going through an environmental review. Also, we've increased the size that commercial buildings can be built without going through an environmental review. Right now, it's 12,000 square feet is the maximum. The state threshold allows you to go up to 30,000 square feet. We've also increased the size of parking, it's not required to go through an environmental review, up to 90, where right now we're at 30. Also, no, we're, we're keeping our fill at 200 cubic yards. But these are things that when you have a very detailed development code, the state allows you to, to raise that exemption threshold because you could address the environmental impacts in your code, and the staff is applying those administratively. We have some new updates to the zoning code, so we now have a university district. Before, the university was lumped into our open space category for like parks. So now it's, they have a list of uses that are associated with universities. We also consolidated our, the two single-family zones that we had into one single-family zone. That's something new. And since our community's not that large, it makes more sense to kind of just have one residential zone, and then we have the multifamily zone. Another example, in the zoning code, we now have a table of permitted uses with expanded uses. So if you tell me, if you're a developer and you say you want to open up, build a car wash, well, I can go and search and find, you know, car wash, and we can find out what zoning categories that type of use is appropriated in. Whereas before, I would have to flip to maybe the light industrial zone or the commercial zone, and I'd have to read through a long paragraph of listed different types of uses, and it was very cumbersome and not user-friendly for the general public to get on our website and try to figure it out on their own as well. The development standards were updated. For instance, our exterior lighting, we now have, the new code directs you to have dark, have lighting fixtures that are dark sky compliant, so we don't have lighting fixtures that are shooting up into the sky and, and making it difficult for us to see the stars at night. Whereas before, my only ability to require dark sky, dark sky compliant lighting was when I was working on a big development, like a commercial development, where I had a little bit more flexibility because I was using the environmental review process to apply standards that we didn't necessarily have in our code. Landscaping standards have been increased a little bit. We now have a sign code. We now have standards for home businesses. Vacation rentals, we have standards for those now. We're allowing vacation rentals, they don't have to be owner occupied, although that's an option. But we have standards in place that require posting at the main entrance of who the proprietor is, a local contact. There'll be rules and regulations listed on that as well, for instance, so the renter, the tenant understands what our quiet hours are, because it may differ from different communities. And when our law enforcement are responding to a nuisance complaint, they'll be able to walk up to the front porch and go, oh, there's the phone number, I'm going to dial and tell them that they have a tenant that's causing problems in the neighborhood. Some other examples in the development standards, we now have the ability to do accessory dwelling units. So every residential property in town will be able to have the possibility to have like a basement apartment that they can rent out to a college student, or put something above a garage. But we're limiting the size of those because we want them to be accessory. We don't want somebody building a second, you know, three-bedroom home in their backyard, but maybe a cottage. And that'll open up new housing opportunities. Another example of new housing opportunities is the ability to do cottage housing, which is where you take small homes, maybe it's a two-bedroom, 800 square foot cottage, maybe it's 600 square feet, and you can cluster those on one property around a common open space. We've reduced the parking standards for those. Typically, when you build this, you know, if you do an apartment or a small unit, you would have one and a half or two parking stalls. We've reduced those standards down to one to make it more flexible and make it more affordable for people to live in our community. Environmentally sensitive areas are critical areas, so these are areas along creeks or wetlands. We haven't changed the standard, we went through a pretty thorough process a few years ago that brought our code up to, up to the state standard. But the code we ended up with was rather complicated to use. Every section of an environmental, since environmentally sensitive area worked you through the process of what, how to, how to get a permit, and so just made for that section to be really long. So we've streamlined that. And then the subdivision section, I touched on this a little bit earlier, but we've gone to a nine-lot short plot versus the four-lot short plot. We've given the code administrator the flexibility to, to reduce the lot size, if, you know, for infill development, which should open up some new development within the city as an example. We also touched on, we now are requiring planting strips, park, park strips is what we're calling them, and beautifier community require a street tree per, per lot. And we're really excited about doing that in, in conjunction with, because we would have a little bit wider right-of-way, we also have reduced some front, front yard setbacks for people that, for developments that have planting strips so that they still can maximize their lot, even though they have a larger right-of-way for the development. So this has been a long process. We started back in our, in November of last year, actually, after we adopted our conference of plan. The planning commission, so they've been meeting over a year, they've met eight times. These meetings, they're open to the public, there are workshops, they were advertised, you know, on social media, and we would meet for two to three hours almost every time we met. The planning commission was very engaged, very, very passionate about what they were doing. We also took this to EdTech, particularly the home, home business and the vacation rental sections, and they recommended approval. The park and recreation, harbor and recreation board reviewed the park standards, and then the historic preservation commission reviewed the demolition section, which, what that, the demolition code allows the city to put a stay on a demolition if the structure's 50 years or older for 30 days. We can reach outreach to the Department of Archaeology and Historic Preservation to see if there, if this may be a historic structure and give us the potential to possibly find a reuse for it. So that's a new section. So in addition to that, we have the public hearing on September 17th, at which time the planning commission recommended approval. We, I think we received somewhere around eight or nine public comments, some of them were from state agencies, but we did have quite a few from, from the public. And I believe we were able to address their concerns to the best of our ability. And you've had ample opportunity to see those, those comment letters as they, when they came out at the previous meetings. So we have three motions. The first motion would be to repeal and replace chapter 2.32 that addresses the planning commission, we had some minor tweaks in there. And then motion two would be to repeal and replace chapter 2.5 that addresses how the hearing examiner's process works. And then motion three would be a motion to repeal and replace the College Place Municipal Code Title 15, which is building and construction, Title 16 subdivisions, Title 17 zoning, Title 18 environment, Title 19 consolidated development code, and Title 14, the Unified Development Code. Any questions?
Okay, we've got to have some questions.
We've heard this so many times.
That being said, I do have a question. Just a clarification, the ATU unit, are these, have to be connected to the main structure? Or can they, because at first you talked about behind or above, and then you said something about a separate cottage, so.
They can be either. It could be, it could be in a basement. There are criteria, for instance, one, one big hurdle for some of these older homes in basements is you need a seven-foot ceiling because of the smoke index builds up really quickly in the event of a fire. But it could be, it could be in addition, it could to the main structure, or it could be detached above a garage, or it could be its own little cottage in the back. It doesn't have to be above a garage, but. And we've put provisions in place for, particularly the ones that are detached, where we don't want somebody's bedroom or kitchen window in this new unit that's maybe above a garage looking down into a neighbor's backyard, but we do want them to be able to have natural light into the unit. So, so windows on side yards will have to be at transom height, so it's not something, I mean, you could look out it, I suppose, if you wanted to get on a stool or something, but it's, you know, just to try to protect the privacy of the neighboring properties. Or another option is to use obscured glass. So we're trying to be considerate, but yet allow, you know, more affordable housing, the opportunity to supplement your income, or even help out, take the trash, you know, take out the trash, so.
Okay. Any, any others? Mr. Cleveland?
I think you said this, I just want to make sure, but you were, did you say that for term rentals without the owner on site were allowed?
Yep.
Anything else to discuss? Mr. Rosatello?
I just say they have each of the codes, and that's just own business, but the vacation rentals, even the zoning code suffered through extensive review of the economic development commission, which has the business community and the chamber representation, and they supported it, so.
And Selby?
I would just like to comment that I really appreciate all the work that you and Mike have done to shepherd this through this incredibly long, complex process. It's going to make life so much easier for so many people, but it did not make life easier for you guys for the last year and a half.
It was needed. Our current zoning and development code dates back to 1984 when we first adopted zoning. There were tweaks here and there, but the majority of it was from 1984, which is kind of scary.
It's a good year.
As this is constructed, how do you, generally speaking, how does this align with the city along, and their changes, what was it, a year ago or more, when we adopted some of these? Is, is it more or less, would you say, Jim, when you're speaking in alignment, are there a few exceptions that you would say are notable?
There's some similarities. They consolidated their residential zones, they're allowing accessory dwelling units. I think there's some differences in the size of the units, ADUs that they're allowing. I think they're allowing a little bit bigger units, but our planning commission was really concerned about, that they wanted to make sure that these were not set homes, so they're keeping them small. And we'll see how it goes. If there's a lot of pushback, or it just doesn't seem to work, then, you know, we may tweak those in the coming years. But of course, the vacation rentals, they're not allowing new units that are not owner occupied, so you still can do an owner occupied one, but no new ones that are just a house for rent.
Just a couple things. I know while you have to have a permit to take down a tree and to plant a tree, and I know we don't do that here, so I'm fine with that. And just to say that I've, in my experience, I've worked through some of these ordinances on a county level, and usually get pushed back when a lawyer comes forward and says, this is problematic, or change this wording, and it's always been done that way, and that's the way we're going to do it. There isn't none of that. Or if it was done, it was not done, to me, it was done by. And I made comments that weren't just legal, just like, hey, you know, you require grass, what about considering something that doesn't take water, or something like that, that's still, you know, fire resistant? And they were, you guys were just great to work with. And they were, you guys were just great to work with, and seemed like they really want this city to agree with it.
Thanks.
I also want to comment and thank you all for considering ways of keeping affordability in the city and making it accessible for everybody. So thank you for carefully considering all the affordability issues that came upon over the last few years. Thank you. That's important to me, as you know, so thank you. Anything else?
For the structure, this will be three separate.
Yes, three separate motions, so we'll, yeah, we'll do them. Let's address motion number one first. Oh, Mr. Bobbitt.
I would like to make the motion to approve ordinance number 19-019, repealing and replacing chapter 2.32 of the College Place Municipal Code, which establishes the College Place Planning Commission.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Are there any other discussions or questions on motion number one? Okay, hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, the ayes have it, the motion is carried and adopted for motion number one. Do we have a motion for motion number two?
Motion number two, motion to approve ordinance number 19-020, repealing and replacing chapter 2.50 of the College Place Municipal Code, which applies, establishes the office of the hearing examiner.
Second. Okay. We have a first and we have a second. Are there any discussion items or questions for motion number two? All right, hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? All right, the ayes have it, the motion is carried and adopted. Next, we have motion number three in front of us.
I move to approve ordinance under 1 Nat 19-021, repealing and replacing municipal code Title 15 buildings in construction, Title 16 subdivisions, Title 17 zoning, Title 18 environment, and Title 19 consolidated development code, with Title 14 unified development code.
Second.
All right, we have a first and a second. Any discussions or questions? All right, hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, the ayes have it, the motion is carried and adopted.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations, thank you very much. Phew. That was a big one. Okay, next on the agenda is Mr. Gordon discussing the 2020 Water System Plan Update Award.
Thank you, Mayor. Every six years, it's almost as regular as Christmas, we have to do a water system plan update. And this is mandated by Department of Health. It means we have to go through our whole picture of what we're doing in terms of water supply for our city. We have to make sure that we have enough supply, that it's in keeping with our projected demands, we have to make sure it's anticipating growth, the whole, getting to work. So our next iteration is due November 7th of 2020. We put out a call for RFP, I think it was on 9/11/2019, received proposals on 9/30. Actually, I should correct that, we received one proposal from RH2, who is the same firm that completed our last water system plan update. RH2 is also the firm that's working with us on the wells right now, and the loop water vein. We've been very pleased with their performance, but their proposal was a little bit on the steep side, we thought. And so we negotiated with them to come up with an arrangement where they would do, if you will, the heavy lifting technically, and we would maybe fill in the blanks on some of the stuff that was more weather play. So what we've come down to is a negotiated contract for just a little over $100,000, where we will be doing a number of chapters in that water system plan update. And you can see I have them listed there in the agenda bill. Most of those, again, we anticipate are going to be pretty straightforward in terms of just changing dates and updating here and there a little bit. One thing we are doing is we're going to be handling the, we're proposing to handle the rate study internally. We already have a spreadsheet that FCS put together for us. It's not exactly plug and chuck, but it's pretty close. Once we put in our new projects that are identified, we should be able to come up with rates for the next few years based on that. So rather than repeat the process and go through it all over again, we think we can do that internally. And I've talked with our new finance director, and he seems to be gung ho on it. Thank you very much, Brian. Appreciate that. Kind of throwing him into the fire here, but anyway. So before you is a motion to approve this contract with RH2. Again, the contract, the plan will need to be done by November 7th of next year. If it is not done, it's not the end of the world, but it's one of those things where Department of Health then probably would give us a yell as opposed to a green light in terms of our system status, and that gives a little more time to work. This is an important update. We're looking at some big changes. We're looking at what we do for water supply. We have declining offer, we have to address those things. So all those issues are going to be kind of brought together into a plan. Any questions?
Any questions, Mr. Chubb?
Is there a reason we couldn't get other people to bid on this? Is it because of the other relationships that makes it difficult for somebody to combat it?
We were very surprised. I think the reason is, is that they're doing such a bang up job of it, that they looked at it and they said, hmm, probably we don't have a chance of beating them out. The disadvantage of that is that we're kind of held hostage to a single respondent in terms of negotiating. But on the flip side, we've been very pleased with what they've done. And they're, they're a good firm, they're well connected, and we're confident they're going to give us a good plan again. The downside is we're going to have some staff time associated with that, so.
So I guess what the risk level would be in some way? I mean, normally you get a competitive bid, you can compare bids to make sure that things are viable and.
Yeah, and to address that, we looked at, in fact, Mike, you did some calling around. We looked at our previous contract with them and actually did a comparison. We pushed it forward by six years and cost wise, and it would have come out to, I think I had like 80,000 or something like 90,000, 89,000 adjusted for inflation. And so we went back to them and said, hey, you know, and they had some reasoning for it. Not sure we're entirely on the same page as far as their reasoning, and that's why we brought it back down. But typically, these kinds of plans cost about $100,000. And in comparing with other cities and comparables, that's what we've come up with.
Mr. Rosatello?
I would just say with the cost that they originally proposed, I talked with some consultants I previously worked at when I was in Polk's, that do the water system plans, and what they quoted was around 100,000, but then I was even asking, why haven't you bid on any of those? And the issue is, is that as far as Spokane area, where a lot of the ones that dabble with East Side Washington, they have enough going on between Spokane Valley, Spokane County, Spokane, Liberty Lake, or Delancey, where I was told it just wasn't worth extra time having to go down here and stuff to bid down here. So that's some of the issues we're having with the contractors that like historically I dealt with when I was in Whitman County. So I think that gives you a little taste as far as the environment, where a lot of folks are just busy.
We need to encourage some startup businesses on this side. Mr. Peterson?
I know we're very comfortable with them, they do great work. Was it last year about this time, was it RH2 that, was it a refund check that we received? This is off subject, I apologize for that somewhat. It's not a, globally with them, is it an at-risk contract or something?
No, I think it's referring to is our wastewater treatment plant with Jacobs, and they brought back a check, it was not RH2.
Well, not RH2?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, at that point, Tom, I think it was Sage Toom Hill. I think the, at that point, they were still Sage Toom Hill, so it's easy to get confused.
I think my alphabet's a mix over at all accounts, but.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, do we have a motion? And Selby?
I will move to authorize the mayor to execute the agreement with RH2 Engineering Incorporated as modified by staff to update the city's comprehensive water system plan for not to exceed amount of $101,877 with a 20% contingency of $20,375.40 for a total council authorization of $122,252.40, with staff given authority to amend the scope of work up to the total authorization.
Second.
Right, we have a first and a second. Any other discussion or questions on the motion? All right, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Any opposed? All right, the ayes have it, the motion is carried and adopted. Thanks, Mr. Gordon.
Thank you, Council.
All right, so now, next item is a supplemental drinking water state revolving fund.
Okay, so what I have here on your agenda bill is really a breakdown of two projects that have been funded through Department of Health and through legislative appropriations. You're familiar with both of them. One is the CCF, or the Consolidated Water System Project, that involves the relocation of well number one, which we also now know as well number four, and our well number two relocation, which we now know as well number six, okay, as the new well number six. Both of those were funded by grants from Department of Health. There were actually three in total. We had this drinking water state revolving fund loan one for 3 million, and then the next year, we were also allowed three more million, but we had to break them into two parts. One part was to fund the remainder of the consolidation project, and then the rest of that 3 million went towards well number two. The reason that those are distinguished like that is that the consolidation project, we get a 50% forgiveness on that loan, the well number two, we don't, so they're split out. So, long story short, we had $6 million in Department of Health loans for the two projects, and we also had about 1.5 million in legislative appropriations as well to go towards those. If you recall, not too long ago, we had a capital budget impasse in which these two projects got stalled for quite some time. And at that time, I think, Mike, it was you who, the administrator here, who raised the red flag and said, hey, this is going to cost us money. And so they, they took that to heart, and so what they're doing is they're offering first come, first served, so it's not absolutely for certain, don't get this, but that we will be able to apply for another, amounts to 10% of those two loans per project. So there's 300,000 more dollars for each project out there that is available at a very attractive interest rate, and so we're going to go ahead and like to apply for those if it's the council's pleasure. And that's what's before you tonight. There's still funding that we have to come up with, however, if you recall, we had, I think it was a 4.5 million dollar, what did we call that, a water budget or water capital projects bond, water revenue bond, I think is what we called it. And it's available, we did things like buy water rights and so forth out of that, and that's still available to fund the remaining difference here. But the interest rate on that is almost double, I think what we're looking at here for the DOH loans. And so it makes sense for us to go for the cheaper money in the long run, and so that's what's before you tonight.
Do we have any questions or comments? Mr. Gordon? Mr. Rosatello?
I would just say the cost on most of the movement target, because if you may recall, when this was originally bid out, we were thinking we were going to hit water around 700 feet and at both wells. We could go well, but it was much more than 700 feet, it actually was around 850 feet. And once you get past where that guaranteed amount was at, there was a per foot surcharge on that, but when you're digging amateur hole, you don't really know until you're down there. So that has been the issue.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, do we have a motion? Mr. Peterson?
I move to approve resolution 19-043, authorizing staff to apply for, the mayor to execute supplemental VUS RF loan agreements related to the water system consolidation and well number two relocation projects.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Any other discussion or questions? All right, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Any opposed? All right, the ayes have it, the motion is carried and adopted.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Rosatello, you're up next regarding the community development block grant.
Okay, this is a good day. Finally, after three years of trying to get this from the state, we actually did give it. So it funds the full final engineering and construction of sidewalk segments along Davis Street on the east side of South Road between Third and Whitman, and then on Bates Street West Side between Fifth and Sixth, and then Seventh and Tenth, and then also on the north side, 12th Street between College and Bates. For all those sections that are along Wall Wall University, there was right of way they had to be donated, and they did. And that was what sent this over, because the past times the state rejected it, because there was a promise they would, but there was actually a formal document filed that was given, and this time there was, so we got the money. So this is the final contract for that, and if y'all approve this, we will get to final engineering and get this going this upcoming summer.
Mr. Cleveland?
Really appreciate all that for going into this at so many times. It's such a high need. I remember as a high schooler walking down Bay in the street because the sidewalk was so spotty, so. I want a motion to approve resolution number 19-044, which accepts the community development block grant, granted by the Central College Place by Mark Rock.
Second.
We've all blocked that street.
Who goes the second? Everybody? I heard the record.
I heard Ms. Mahagan. Okay, we have a first and a second. Any other discussion or questions? And Selby?
A couple years ago, we got given a history of College Place, and what it said was that a big driver behind forming the municipality of College Place was because people want sidewalks. So I am very happy that we are finally delivering sidewalks.
What can we do in the next 50?
And with much appreciation to Wall Wall University for cooperating with us and providing us with what we needed to get this.
Yep.
All right, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? I didn't think so. All right, the ayes have it, the motion is carried and adopted. Thank you so much, Mr. Rosatello, appreciate your hard work on that. Okay, next you have a resolution of support for Washington State Public Works Board broadband.
Okay, State Public Works Board has a new program where they fully fund long-term plans for essentially broadband 5G, doing internet systems with public-private partnerships. As you may recall, we've had a policy where every time we do a road reconstruction, we put in the blank conduit, and then we have the lease policy that you all approved a while back. This would be a little more systematic, where it takes a look at the city as a whole, and then figure out where the runs are needed, because right now, we've just been doing them as we happen to have entire roads ripped up, and it makes sense. But this is one of the few times our state is actually fully funding plans, and they only have the authorization, this go around, and it's due on Wednesday. So that's what this is for.
Well, don't give us so much time. Okay, any questions or comments? Will you have time to get it done?
It's all in there, I'm just waiting for the resolution.
He doesn't sleep. I'd like to make a motion to authorize resolution number 19-045 in support of, for the Washington State Public Works Board broadband planning program.
Second.
I was in stereo, being. I don't know who this, Ms. Selby.
I was one of them.
First and a second, are there any other discussions or questions? Okay, hearing none, do we, let's get actually to vote, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, hearing none, the ayes also have it, the motion is carried and adopted. That'll be great. Thank you, Mr. Rosatello. Okay, for all her patience, Mr. Frank is now up to discuss the College Place Personnel Manual Update. Thank you so much for your patience.
Absolutely. All right, so back in.
All right, so back in January of 2018, we did a complete overhaul of the Personnel Manual for the first time in forever. Since then, there have been no changes to the document. And tonight, I'm here to present a few changes that we'd like to make. First one is just the organizational chart, updating it to where we're at right now. We've added a few positions since the manual was updated. The Deputy Clerk Finance HR position was added. Changes in the Community Development Department that brought the Building Inspector and Facility Manager under the Community Development Director, and then also the Special Enforcement Officer. So those have all been updated in the organizational chart. Next, in an effort to be fair to all of our employees, we would like to update the health insurance section to include domestic partner coverage, so they'd be eligible for the same insurance benefits that are available to the spouses of our city employees. We feel like it's the right thing to do for our employees. Next change, just a slight change in the Personnel Appearance Guideline, to change it from just an overall business casual to just direct the employees to conform to whatever the area that they work in, what the standards are, their professional community. And then the next change is the drug and alcohol policy, which has already been approved in August of 2018 through a resolution, we approved it, I just put it in there, so it's in the same document. And then just a few changes in like language, spelling errors, things like that throughout the document. And then lastly, some changes to the travel policy. They're not really changes, just clarifying language that would clear up questions that come up when people travel out of town, about when meals are paid for and when they're not. And then second, authorizing employees to use a city credit card when their travel doesn't require an overnight stay instead of having to request a travel advance or reimbursement. So those are the changes. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to try to address them. If not, you'll see it at the next council meeting for approval.
I should make a quick clarification prior to Mr. Dorian, it was the end of our action items. And this is, so there's no.
There will be no actions.
And this is an administrative report time. So do we have any questions or comments from Mr. Dorian regarding Personnel Policy? Actually, that's it, yeah, Personnel Manual.
I'd like to thank our city staff again. They do such a good job.
Absolutely.
It's incredible. Got all of this paperwork, I can read it all because of my eyes, but I'll tell you, I really appreciate it. But I can call in, and they always have an answer for me, and I appreciate it so much.
Thank you, March.
Ms. Cole?
Not the most exciting reading I've ever done.
This? Come on! Really? You need to read better stuff. Wow, yes.
I do read better stuff. That was definitely.
Quality material.
Ms. Cole?
That's perfect.
Yeah, I'm just excited. I know that you have a mechanism to disseminate and make sure that every employee has gotten it, but could you tell us what your comments are?
I'm going to keep it secret.
I think that's okay.
Yeah. No, whenever there's an update, well, this is only the second update, but anyway, they will need to sign the acknowledgement form that says that they have read it, and then probably with just some sort of a little, you know, these are the changes, so maybe they don't have to read every word. 'Cause they all read it when they first, when they first. So they'll know what the changes are.
Yeah, that's.
Word for word, they, yes, absolutely. Thank you. Yes.
Well, thank you very much for, well, that offers now, Manual. We appreciate the additions and considerations, thank you. All right. Do we have any other discussion items that anybody would like to bring up? All right, so do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Do we look at the housing grant?
No.
That's a sign of misinformation. We end up getting another grant with City of Walwala for regional housing study, so.
All right, we had a motion to adjourn the meeting, we have a second.
A second.
All right, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed that wanna hang around?
No.
All right, the ayes have it, the motion is carried and adopted, and the meeting is adjourned. I'm sorry? What's that?
March.
March made the.